I assume everybody that's going to be here is here. For those of you who are not regulars here, would you please turn off your cellphones? And mind the parking regulations out here if you're parked out to the right. They will ticket you, okay? I'll try to remember to warn you, but I may forget that. And we will take a break mid-morning. And hopefully someone will remind us all. Would you please join me for the flag salute? Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We sort of take that for granted, at least until lately. Have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Here. Chair Onstadt?
Here.
Commissioner Kestley?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here. Thank you.
Now is the time set aside for public comments. These are for matters of citizen interest, not appearing on the agenda. Does anybody wish to speak? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on. The next item is the approval of the September 7th minutes. Do I have discussion and/or a motion?
I need to make a correction.
Yes.
To the minutes reflecting my disclosure of the site visit to Renaissance, I was not accompanied by somebody from Supervisor Long's office. It was County Supervisor Peter Foy's office.
Anything else? Anyone else?
As long as we're doing the September 7th minutes, it says that, I'm not sure why this changed, but it says neighborhood instead of area in my disclosure for September 7th. I don't know if it's too late for that to be fixed. I just read it. It still said neighborhood instead of area, and it doesn't make any sense because there's no neighborhood.
Any other comments?
Otherwise, did you move?
I didn't make a motion.
We need a motion.
Move to approve the minutes with the two corrections as stated.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Folks who are waiting for electronics here. Okay. Moving on. First item on the agenda, PL 15-0001. The applicant Thompson Oil Company requests the CUP to authorize the continued operation of an oil and gas production facility in the Piru area for an additional 20 years. The appellant's are Los Padres, Forest Watch, and Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas, who have appealed the decision of the planning director to grant the CUP. This matters before us on a de novo hearing. Staff report, please.
Good morning, Chair Onstadt, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Jay Dobrowolsky, case planner for the item before you today. The item is the appeal of the planning director's decision to grant a conditional use permit for oil and gas exploration. The appellant's are in attendance as well. Before I begin, I should mention there were two late submittals, Exhibits 1213 and Exhibit A, you should have received. There are two decisions before your commission today. The first is whether or not to grant the CUP, and the second is whether or not to grant the appeal. The project site is located approximately three miles southeast of Lake Piru, near Los Angeles County. The site is accessed from a paved road off of Highway 126 in Los Angeles County. The project is the continued use of an existing oil and gas facility that includes six wells and one gas compressor on an existing pad. There are no changes proposed to the existing facility. The wells will not use hydraulic fracturing. The existing facility is located in the middle of the Ramona Oil Field. The facility has largely remained in its current configuration since 1946. The western portion of the pad contains two wells. The middle portion of the pad contains two wells and a gas compressor. And the eastern portion of the pad contains two wells. The proposed project before you today is the same project that was approved by the planning director in April of 2017. In order to grant the CUP, your commission must make certain findings. A discussion of how the project meets those findings is in the planning director's staff report. The project is the continued use of an existing facility, does not involve expansion of use, and does not have the possibility to have a significant effect on the environment. Thus, staff recommends that your commission find the project exempt from environmental review. The appellant's have appealed the project for the following reasons. The approval is inconsistent with the Ventura County noncoastal zoning ordinance and the terms and conditions of the existing permit. The project is not exempt from environmental review under SEQA, and a subsequent or supplemental MND or EIR must be prepared. The grounds of appeal will be discussed in three separate parts. The first part of the grounds of appeal is, the approval is inconsistent with the Ventura County noncoastal zoning ordinance. Staff's response is that the project is consistent with the zoning ordinance. That discussion is in the planning director hearing staff report. Thus, this ground of appeal is without merit. The second part of the grounds of appeal is, the approval is inconsistent with the terms and conditions of the existing permit. Staff's response is that, as part of the permit process, a compliance review was performed, and no zoning violations have been identified at the facility. Thus, this ground of appeal is without merit. The third part of the grounds of appeal is, the project is not exempt from review under SEQA, and a subsequent or supplemental MND or EIR must be prepared. Staff's response is that, there are no physical changes proposed to the project site, and there's no possibility of a significant impact on the environment. Thus, this ground of appeal is without merit. In summary, the project does not include any physical changes, no environmental impacts have been identified, and there is no evidence that the planning director action was taken in error. Pursuant to the noncoastal zoning ordinance, notice was mailed to surrounding property owners and interested parties. A legal ad was also published in the Ventura County Star newspaper. The appellant's recommend your commission take the following action: deny the permit pending compliance with the existing permit, Ventura County noncoastal zoning ordinance, and SEQA. Staff recommends you take the following actions, those are published in the staff report. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Now is the time for disclosures by commissioners. Does anyone have a disclosure?
No disclosures.
I have no disclosure.
No disclosures.
No disclosures.
Thank you. Questions of staff?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if I could add a few comments to the staff presentation?
Certainly.
I just wanted to give you a little more explanation about the late submittals. We received a letter from the Los Padres Forest Watch, the appellant, one of the appellant's, and it repeated the same information that was responded to at an earlier time in March of this year. We also added a short memorandum outlining the additional finding of approval currently required in the zoning ordinance. As you may recall, an additional finding was added to the zoning ordinance by the board earlier this year involving that the project has been approved in compliance with SEQA, which you would have made that finding anyway. We just made it overt and on the record in a short memorandum. One thing that is different about the permit that virtually today versus yesterday is the proposed permit, we've added the condor protection best management practices as recommended by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to the new permit. That's not indicating there's any impact on condors. We just do it as a matter of routine of anything in that area. With that, Jay and I are available for questions.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Jay, do we have any notices of violations against this project?
Chair Onstadt, staff has not found any history of zoning violations on this project site.
Have we received any complaints about the operation?
No, staff has not received any zoning complaints.
Okay. Thank you. Now we'll have the presentation of the applicant. No, the applicant. Big fight? It's the de novo hearing. Do we have a presentation by the applicant?
Mr. Chair, I don't see the applicant in the room, and I have no explanation.
Well, I guess we'll stand on what has been delivered. Is there anyone here in support of the applicant? I guess the appellant's up. Good morning. Please state your name and address, please.
I'm Kimberly Rivers, Executive Director of SeaFrog.
And I'm Jeff Kuiper, Executive Director of Los Padres Forest Watch. Speaking for myself, I don't know if Kim has any prepared comments, but we submitted our comments in writing to your commission earlier this week, and we're here to answer any questions if your commission has any questions. Thank you.
And on behalf of SeaFrog, we just wanted to emphasize the importance of the county enforcing permit conditions. So, Forest Watch, in the comments they submitted, went into the aspect of that the application for this project was submitted well after the expiration date that the county had as a permit condition. The public really needs to be able to depend on those permit conditions for all projects, and especially, we feel, in oil and gas projects. So, we'd like you to keep that in mind when you're considering this. And something else to emphasize that has come up in various times that I've been before the planning commission, that I've heard statements made, that you are just a technical advisory committee, when in fact, today, you're a decision maker, each one of you. And so, in other processes, you might act in that capacity as a technical advisory committee, but today, as part of the appeal and project approval process, you're a decision maker, right? You have the power to, as the findings, to approve the project, deny the project, to make modifications, and also to direct staff to enforce the permit conditions that are in the permit. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. County Counsel?
Chair Onstadt.
Is there anything to preclude them from moving forward because the petition expired, or the CUP expired prior to the initiation of a modification, or a new CUP? I know of none myself, but...
I'm sorry, what?
The appellant has taken a position that the application for the new CUP or modification took place after the expiration of the prior permit, and therefore, is an issue regarding our moving forward with the current application. I don't think that's true. Is there any legal theory upon which they can rest there?
No, and I'm not aware of those underlying facts, but even if the CUP did expire, then your commission and the county has the authority to grant a new CUP.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of the appellant's? Do you have anybody else here to speak?
No, but if...
Go ahead, ma'am.
It's my understanding that what's before you is not a new CUP. I just heard Mr. Barnes say that it would be in your authority to grant a new CUP. What I see is a modification of a CUP, right? So, I think, and maybe Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, that the piece of the argument regarding this condition about the expiration date is that the CUP expired. And I believe there's language in the general plan, in the noncoastal zoning ordinance, and of course, in the CUP, that say, you know, expiration dates, there's language about being null and void if it's allowed to expire, that sort of thing. And so, what's before you is a modification. It's not a new CUP. If it were a new CUP, I think that would be a different process rather than a modification.
Mr. Baca, do you have a comment?
Mr. Chair, the CUP did not expire. The applicant applied for the CUP prior to the expiration date of the CUP. What the appellant is referring to is a condition that occurred in a lot of old permits where the applicant was encouraged to come in six months before the expiration date to file for a mod with the idea that you have processing time. That's superseded by ordinance which allows you to file prior to, this is 811-2-10 of the zoning ordinance, where the CUP remains in effect while you're processing the new modified permit as long as you file before the expiration date. So, that's superseded by ordinance. So, the CUP did not expire prior to the filing. And I would say that if it were a new CUP, and we changed the name on top of this to "new" not "modified," the process would be identical. The existing setting is physically what it is on the site, and there'd be no difference at all, except one word on the staff report either way. But in this case, that's just not right. And we've had this situation arise before on mining projects, where there was this constant idea that we wanted people to come in way before their expiration date, but by ordinance, they're only required to come in the day before their expiration date.
Thank you, sir. Do you have anyone else who wishes to speak? Do you have some?
Yeah, just to quickly respond to that, the permit condition in question, it's condition number four, says that upon the filing of a renewal application 18 months prior to the expiration of the permit, the permit shall continue in force until the request is acted upon and all administrative appeals are heard. The permutee operator of record is solely responsible for the timely renewal of this permit. And so, again, we understand the zoning ordinance now says as long as the application is submitted the day before permit expiration, then that application can move forward. But this permit condition was never modified after the zoning ordinance was changed. This permit condition is still in full force and effect, and again, we're urging your commission to underscore the point that timing matters, that permit language matters, and here's a situation where we're not talking about the permutee just being a few days late, or a few weeks late, or a few months late. They were a year and a half late in filing this permit renewal application. So, that's our main concern here. Thank you.
I would just say what Mr. Baca said, you know, if it's a new CUP, it's still the same process, and so, the baseline for SEQA is there's an oil operation there. It's been there for almost 70 years. And so, that's, whether you call it new or modified, your commission has authority to grant the CUP. And the environmental analysis and the SEQA exemption, in my legal opinion, would still be the correct approach.
Thank you. Richard? Question of staff. This issue's come up, I think, in the past, as Mr. Baca said. Don't we have, I seem to recall that we were, I guess, advised that planning has a process in place now that reviews the CUPs and reaches out before their expiration to make sure that they're on the radar so that they can get renewed in a more timely fashion. Is that my recollection correct on that?
Commissioner Rodriguez, we do have that process in place. So, it's the sole responsibility of the applicant to file the application. But we do have a process in place where we will go through the applications and send out letters letting people know. So, I'm not sure if that happened in this case, but regardless, they filed for the application before the permit expired. So, we do have lots of permits, right? We have a 70-year permit history, and the permit conditions say all sorts of things. So, when the ordinance changes to have something, that is what we're going by. We do not go back and comb through 2,000 files, right, and send out 2,000 letters to say, "The ordinance changed, this condition is null and void, and now you don't have 18 months, you have one day." You know, the expiration date is the expiration date, and that's what we're looking for, for people to come in. Had they not come in, right, and there's a 70-year history, and this happens all the time, too, a tire shop, you know, shoe store, people come in all the time, and their permits have lapsed, right, and it is their responsibility. But if they had one time had a permit, they're operating in compliance with the permit, the county stance would be to issue into a compliance agreement, not shut down their business because they had a permit. The county stance would be enter into a compliance agreement, and we would put milestones to obtaining the permit. So, you know, it's the same end result, except they filed before the expiration date.
Thank you. Do you have anything further?
Nope.
Do you have anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay. Well, I doubt if there'll be a rebuttal on behalf of the applicant, and if you have anything more to say, you can say it now. It's your rebuttal for the appellant. All right. Okay. Staff closing comments? None? Okay. We need to move those exhibits into the record. I'm going to close the public hearing discussion. Commissioners? Seeing none? A motion? Mind? Well, I can. Well, I move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded.
That includes the late documents?
Well, I asked that they be moved into the record, the exhibits. Thank you. Thank you, folks. The next item on the agenda is PL 14-0086. The applicant Santa Clara Valley Agricultural Development Corporation requests a modified CUP be granted and an amended reclamation plan to authorize the continued operation of an existing surface mining facility for an additional 30-year period. The appellant is the city of Moore Park. The matter's before us for a de novo hearing based on the appeal of the city of Moore Park's, on their appeal of the planning director's decision to grant the permit. Staff report, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Brian Baca, and you won't hear that sentence much longer.
You keep threatening us, Brian.
Before you today is the Rancho San Cristobal Mining Project, case number PL 14-0086. And I'll get right into it. Here's a map of the project site. It is located right there, about three miles from Fillmore and five miles from Moore Park, off to the side of State Route 23. And I keep recycling this slide every time we have a mining case. There's three things you need to have to operate a mine in the state of California: a local permit to mine, in our county, it's called a conditional use permit, an approved reclamation plan, and an adequate financial assurance. And the items that are before you today are the first two. There is an amended reclamation plan that goes with this project along with a modified conditional use permit. This is the history of the site. It started with a landslide that occurred in 1988, and an orchard moved over State Highway 23. And it resulted in, of course, the orchard being destroyed, and State Highway 23 was actually moved over to the west to be placed beyond the toe of the landslide. And of course, the landslide is a giant mass of clay, which is the product that is produced at this facility, is clay, not aggregate. It's not sand and gravel. So, from 1993 to 1997, the owners of the property made various attempts to stabilize the landslide, and part of this, they had a series of grading permits where they were excavating clay and taking clay off the site, trying to stabilize the site, and somewhere in the process there, they realized that there was a market for the clay, which is as landfill intermediate and final cover. And we have, of course, operating landfills in the Los Angeles and Ventura areas, and they applied for a CUP for mining, which is what they were doing at that point, and that was granted in 1998. It was extended various times until 2014, and before the permit expired, the applicant applied for a renewal of that permit or a modified permit. May of this year, the project was approved by the planning director. That decision was appealed by the city of Moore Park to your commission. Here is the capsule summary of the project. The excavation area is staying the same. The CUP area is shrinking slightly, virtually the same. The daily truck trip limit is the same as it was previously. That's 300 truck trips, that's one-way truck trips, or 150 loads per day. The peak hour trips are remaining the same during the 180 days that they're currently allowed to operate. And the proposal largely is to, the current permit limits them to 180 operational days per year, Monday through Friday only, and they're proposing to pick up the remainder of the weekdays to continue operating for all of the Monday through Fridays in a year, which is an 80 additional days of operation. There's no Saturday or Sunday truck trips. And so, with those 80 additional days, of course, they'd have greater production in the year, and the modifications of the reclamation plan, which includes slightly deeper excavation, would have a higher total amount of excavation. There's no route restrictions on the trucks there, as we don't normally restrict traffic on state highways. This facility was analyzed in the original EIR. I'll show you some of this in a minute. It was analyzed in the original EIR as having roughly 80% of its trips heading northbound. Over the last 20 years, since it was permitted, closer to 90% or even over 90% have gone northbound, because the primary customer of this facility is a landfill in Los Angeles County. Here is the amended reclamation plan, just to put it on the record, slight changes, and it shows the green is the volume of material that will be excavated from the site, and you can see it's a fairly simple plan that they're left with. And the material that's in green is largely all disrupted landslide material that sits there in various stages of motion. Here's an aerial photograph of the site, and not a very good one, I might add. So, right in here is the excavation area, so here's virtually the area that is involved in the excavation right here. All of this sort of mottled area here is the front of the landslide failure.
Excuse me, Mr. Baca. Could you go to an aerial that shows where the toe of the slope crossed 23, or show us what happened there?
Well, on this...
As best you can.
Well, it shows right on the map. This was 23.
All right.
And this is 23 today. So, it moved from here over to here. So, all of this is landslide. So, this entire block of material... So this entire block of material moved over, and this part of the road was destroyed.
Has the movement of the roadway to the west remediated the threat to 23?
Yes, yes. And of course, the remediation is to remove the driving force, that is, the weight of the material behind it, and they've largely excavated behind it. So that block of material that's right next to the road is not moving. What is continuing to move and is unstable is the back slope up here.
When you say the back slope, it's on the other side of a ridge, I assume.
Yeah, this ridge was actually moving, but there's no driving force because the material behind it has been excavated. This is a hole right here. So this has ceased to move. So they've stabilized the landslide in terms of the highway, but the landslide in terms of continuing to fail down slope continues in this area.
And what's there? Grazing land? Was there avocados? What is it?
It's mining and grazing, and grazing will -- what they're going to use it mainly for when it's reclaimed. If they can get some sites that are actually stable, they tend to plant trees if they can have any stable land at the end.
In clay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
This is just a picture of it. This is the central excavation area, and the failing slope is in the background there. And that's what it looks like. The secret review of this project, the county did an EIR in 1998, and so it was a certified EIR. What's been prepared for this project is an addendum to that FEIR. No additional potentially significant impacts were identified. The main issues would be geology, air quality, and traffic. And of course, in geology, it's an unstable area, and all this excavation will do will be to stabilize it.
Is it still unstable in the area of Highway 23?
Not in the area of Highway 23, only in the hillside that they're mining that's back away from the highway.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And so no new potential significant impacts were identified. The maximum daily traffic that people would experience on weekdays would remain unchanged, although there'd be 80 more days a year of such traffic. Now, one thing we've done for those 80 additional days is none of that additional traffic will be allowed to occur in the peak hour. So it'll all have to occur between 8:00 in the morning and 3:00 in the afternoon. So there'll be no morning or evening peak hour traffic on the 80 days, and we have a recording mechanism by which we can assure that that's going to happen, that there'll be no new peak hour trips in either direction. And remember, roughly 90% of the traffic goes through Fillmore, and the city of Fillmore has weighed in, and they're okay with the project as long as they contribute to an intersection improvement that they're planning for the SR 23, SR 126 intersection.
I read the Fillmore response to the letter. It seemed like they were not happy. But you're saying they're happy if the applicant will help with the improvements of that Highway 126-23 intersection?
Well, the city of Fillmore letter says, "We're unhappy."
That's right.
And then the last paragraph outlines how happiness can be achieved. And the applicant has decided to achieve happiness and has voluntarily included that condition in their permit. And, you know, I would say both cities are not thrilled about mining trucks. And so -- but this was what they're satisfied with, and I've spoken with the city manager and the planning director, and they're fine with the way it's conditioned now. Again, we've dealt with that on air quality. One thing that was added that was not available at the time was greenhouse gas analysis. That's incorporated into the environmental document, and the amount of greenhouse gases is less than significant. And of course, and I'll talk some more about the correspondence you've received at the end of my presentation. And the traffic in terms of the appellant, I want to point out, and it's in the memorandum you received today or yesterday, 10% approximately of the traffic would involve the city of Moore Park. And that 10% of the 80 additional days would be 30 trips on 80 days, which is 2,400 trips. And average that over a year, that works out at about six and a half to seven one-way trips a day. And that -- and in staff's analysis, that is negligible compared to the 6,000 ADT of traffic currently on that roadway, including 1,300 trucks per day that go through Moore Park. So that's why there wasn't a finding that was any significant effect on the city of Moore Park.
Chairman Onstad.
Excuse me. Go ahead.
Richard.
Question?
Brian. We get mired in statistics here. Traffic loads, traffic, not truck one-way trips, but actually loaded trucks are going to travel Monday through Friday. Is that accurate?
That's true, as they do now.
The mine is also going to continue to operate on Saturdays, but there will be no truck traffic?
No, they're not authorized to do any material export on Saturdays, just to do work on the site.
But there will still be trucks moving on Saturday in any fashion at all?
Not arriving to or departing from the mining site. There'll be no material hauling on weekends.
So all the activity will take place within the CUP boundaries on Saturdays?
That's correct, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Thank you.
I've -- I show this chart, and I've updated it several times, and this lists the five mining projects that are in the Grimes Canyon area and the truck trips thereof. The column on the left, it sort of stays the way it is. That's what was the pre-2014 condition and the total number of mining truck trips that are authorized in the Grimes Canyon area. And you can see the currently permitted truck volume is 1,980, and that's not changing. What is changing is just -- and the Saturday trips are what they are. That's the existing setting. You can see the green line there is Rancho San Cristobal, the project in front of you. What's changing is sort of the footnote there is that Rancho San Cristobal, we've always carried them as 300 ADT and not differentiated between the fact that they had a limited number of days per year to operate, 180. What's changing is they're going, you know, they're filling this chart out and going the full-time Monday through Friday. But there's no actual change in the maximum number of trucks per day that are on the As we usually do, we check to see that the project is consistent with the mineral resource policies, conforms to the MRP overlay zone, and complies with all the special use standards for mining. We believe that all the CUP findings can be made pursuant to 8111-1.2.11 of the NCZO, and that all the reclamation plan findings specified in ordinance and in the state geology board regulations can be met. Comments from nearby cities? As I said before, the city of Fillmore wants them to pay a fair share toward the SR 23, SR 126 intersection improvements, and the applicant has voluntarily included that condition in their permit. The city of Moore Park, they have requested, you know, that we incorporate some mitigation and collect some unspecified fees. And again, we have declined because we -- the city of Moore Park has decided not to prepare a fee program in accordance with the law, the Mitigation Fee Act. And so this is an ongoing thing with -- between the county and the city. You received another letter from the city of Moore Park dated earlier this week, October 2nd, and it raises various sequoia issues, and again, a request that we impose a nexus-based proportional fee to collect money on behalf of the city of Moore Park. And in consultation with counsel, we have not found a legal nexus for which we can do that, and we have not been informed of a particular amount or the basis for the particular amount. And so the county has no ability to collect money for Moore Park. These were the grounds of appeal that were included in the appeal letter. And again, it's the -- they acknowledge that 90% of the traffic does not head toward Moore Park, and still, they refer to unmitigated impacts of which are unspecified and unidentified. And their May 8th letter that they reference in their grounds of appeal says there's no effective mitigation for cumulative traffic, air quality, noise, and safety impacts, and that a subsequent EIR is required. They don't provide any substantial evidence to support this contention. Again, there's no new traffic, peak hour trips, and that's the basis by which traffic impacts are identified in both the city of Moore Park and in the county, and there aren't any one. And again, 90% of the traffic is northbound, so the grounds of appeal are without merit. These are the staff recommended actions, and I won't read them to you. They're in your staff report. I want to go over some of the correspondence that you've received recently. Like last night, there is the response by staff to all the issues raised in the Moore Park's letter. That staff memorandum is dated October 4th. That would be Exhibit 15. Since this document responds to environmental issues, we're requesting as part of your action to incorporate this document into the EIR addendum, the environmental document, since this is largely a response to comments on environmental issues. There's also a memorandum, one page, that also dated October 4th, where we put down the language and basis for making that new finding that the proposed development is approved in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act and all other applicable laws. And so that would be part of your action, would be to make this finding that's in this staff memorandum.
Would you submit those to the clerk? Does the clerk can identify them as exhibits?
I believe it is Exhibit 16. There are some correspondence you've received from the attorney for the applicant, Mr. Peter Goldenring, in which he makes various comments about the requests made by the city of Moore Park. And so that would be Exhibit A. Exhibit B is an email from the Montgomery and Mary Winkler, in which they expressed concerns about the project in terms of traffic safety. That is followed up, which you don't have, and I'll submit this to the clerk, is an email I received yesterday from the same parties withdrawing their objection to the project and expressing that they were confused and they were actually more concerned with the Grimes Rock project, not Rancho San Cristobal. And so I'll just submit that to the clerk.
Would that be Exhibit C, then?
No, that would be Exhibit E would be that one. Exhibit C is the October 2nd letter by the city of Moore Park, which we already discussed and is attached to the staff memorandum. There's also another letter from the -- Mr. Goldenring, representing the applicant, again, expressing his concerns about the requests of the city of Moore Park. With that, I am available for any questions.
I am.
Well, we'll have disclosures first. Nora, disclosure?
No disclosures.
I have no disclosure.
I did drive by the location just to get familiar with it on Sunday.
Richard.
As I stated before, I worked, physically worked in the city of -- in the city of Moore Park on behalf of the sheriff for a three-year period in the early 90s. So I'm pretty familiar with general traffic and the impact on the city of Moore Park.
Questions for staff? Nora?
I think it's in the reclamation plan where they talk about grazing after this is all taken down, and I was wondering why it called out just for cattle and horses and it didn't just say livestock. Because --
I -- you've stumped the chump.
Because I was thinking, why not alpacas? Why not ostriches? I mean, why not, you know, we have a farmer here. Why not just livestock instead of horses? And I was wondering if there was a reason.
I do not know the reason, and I don't have an ordinance basis to tell them which animals they can have.
But it does say. It caught my attention. Anyway, just wondering. Maybe we could fix it, or no?
Well, the reclamation plan that is --
That's all done.
Well, it's done, and it's also been reviewed by the state and approved by the state.
So we're not going to touch it?
Well, that's up to a majority of the people in front of me.
It's a de novo hearing, Nora.
I don't know. Just caught my attention. Thank you.
Any of you folks have any questions?
Just a general question as it relates to the traffic mitigation fees. This issue with Moore Park's been going on for a long time. I mean, I can't remember when I first heard about this and which CUP request we heard it in front of. Is there any specific reason that staff's aware of why the city of Moore Park's not complying with, you know, the request or requirement on these mitigation fees? Is it a legal issue that they're trying to reserve?
Do we have a representative of the city of Moore Park here?
Does not appear. Thank you. Go ahead.
Because obviously, there is an impact to the city of Moore Park by truck traffic, even though it might only be 10% in this particular case. You know, I've personally witnessed the impact of truck traffic there, so I'm kind of at a loss to understand why the city of Moore Park hasn't made the effort to pursue mitigation fees through the legal courts they have available to them. And again, I'm wondering whether it's a legal issue. I don't know.
Well, I would first say it's a legal issue, Chairman Onstad and members of the commission. I would just say, in historic context, the county used to collect a mitigation fee for the city of Moore Park based upon the county's fee in the unincorporated Moore Park area. That was determined to be inappropriate because there was no compliance with the Mitigation Fee Act, which requires an engineer's study, a public hearing, and an adoption of a fee program. That has not occurred in the city of Moore Park, and I decline to speculate on their
Very politically astute. I think Mr. Goldenring has another suggestion, which I think is probably closer to the truth, Richard. They find it easier to negotiate directly with the city and bypass the county and their rules and regulations to be in a better financial position.
I got that from the history that was shared by Mr. Goldenring. Well, we'll see what the New Year brings. Maybe there's change on the horizon.
Don't go anywhere. I have questions.
Okay.
I understand and appreciate all the statistics I saw. What troubled me was there was a smattering of statistics over various periods of time regarding accidents on Highway 123 from Santa Paula to the city of Moore Park. Excuse me. Right, anyway, from Fillmore South 23 to Moore Park. And invariably, there were 100 or 200 during these various periods, or 300, and invariably, I think the statistic came back that approximately 15% of them involved trucks. Okay. I have no idea whether those were fatalities, fender benders, or what they were. Do we have -- do we have a traffic study, cumulative traffic study regarding accidents on Highway 123 from Fillmore to Moore Park? And if so, is it current?
Well, actually, two traffic studies were done for the two EIRs that your commission looked at for the other two mining projects, Grimes Rock and Wayne J. Sand and Gravel. Now, Grimes Rock in particular, that facility sends approximately 70% of its truck trips northbound, which is roughly the same number of trips as Rancho San Cristobal has in total. And in that EIR, the accident rates, and this was 2014, the accident rate was not, you know, viewed as something unusual for a state highway. And it was -- and of course, you've got to remember that we're talking, in this particular case, about adding, you know, adding 80 days of operations.
We'll get to that.
And non-peak hour trips, which is most of the accidents would be in the peak hour. hour.
Well, as a person who drives 23 on a regular basis a couple of times a week, do those studies take into account Grimes grade, the thirteen-foot lanes? I know there have been some improvements, and I know that the staff report and documents say that there's only, even with this study and, and the termination of their prior CUP, there's something like sixty-four hundred trips. And it's, the county says it's okay to have up to eleven thousand.
That is true.
I find that unbelievable. Anybody who drives this thing on a regular basis and hasn't, hasn't looked in their rearview mirror and seen nothing but the grill of a semi ten feet behind them would take great exception to that. Who figures out that eleven thousand is acceptable on a road with that grade? I mean, you're, are we going to some blind statistic that says in the state of California, this particular type of road, without taking into consideration that silly grade, is safe?
The, I believe the, the language Commissioner Anstott is that the road in its current configuration meets minimum state standards.
Is it safe?
It, it meets, nothing is safe. Everything has an accident rate, so nothing is totally safe.
I understand.
And so it meets standards, and, and they would look at accident statistics, and if they don't see anything that's unusual, they would say that it meets safety standards. But nothing in life is totally safe, which is the context of your question.
Well, I understand. I understand the total truck traffic from Fillmore to Moore Park is predicated somewhere around two thousand today?
It's nineteen-hundred-and-eighty today, it used to be twenty-one-hundred-some.
Right. And what percentage of that goes north to the city of Fillmore? I guess I'm more than slightly concerned because I live in the area, drive it, speak to the residents of Santa Paula and Fillmore, and they can't believe that their city, Fillmore, finds this situation acceptable. There isn't hardly anyone I know that hasn't lost, had a pitted windshield or been in a close call. Monty Winkler wrote the letter saying, at, at his particular area there, there have been two accidents, maybe not caused by this individual company, but by somebody else. I think it was Saturday last, I was northbound, or southbound past Elkins Golf Course in a straightaway there with a truck ahead of me, and three cars at top speed flew around me in front of Winkler's house so that they wouldn't have to follow those trucks up the grade. Now, you may have some level of comfort that we can take up to eleven thousand trips, but I don't think you can take what you've got now. And I am hard pressed, and I'll tell you right now, to vote for any increase in truck traffic on Highway 126, whether it goes, or excuse me, Highway 23, whether it goes north and south, because I don't think it's safe now. And the idea that you can take up to eleven thousand trips is ridiculous. I guess that's an editorial comment, and to which you don't have to respond. But I think if someone drives this road on a regular basis, you'd come away with the same feeling. And that's not to say that the drivers aren't good and competent, but things happen. It's just, it's just amazing to me, the traffic. And I understand what you're saying, I understand that you think it's safe, but I don't think it's safe. I will just say right now, I will not vote to increase any truck traffic, any increase of days, et cetera. I will not. Not based on what I see on the ground. You can show me all the statistics you want, but I drive it on a regular basis, and so do friends and family, and it's not safe. That's it. I'm through. Thank you, sir.
Now for the applicant. Morning, Peter.
Good morning, Chair Anstott, and welcome back, Commissioner Iadukas. Glad you're on the mend. So I have a few comments, but I'd like to speak directly to yours that you just spoke a moment ago. Because both one, one of the charts I'm going to ask Mr. Baca to put on the board, I think, answers your question, but there's a more fundamental issue. Because if the city of Moore Park had chosen to come, I was prepared to pull out a check for forty-eight thousand dollars and hand it to them in front of you and have them withdraw the appeal.
Peter, I don't think there's any doubt in anyone's mind at the county or up here in the five, what is going on with the city of Moore Park?
Well, but the issue is, you, you are expressing something that I think with respect, and I have great personal and professional respect for you, as you know, is an anecdotal feeling about a state highway environment over which nobody in this room has control or the right to control. And the, and you're doing it in an environment that essentially rewards the city of Moore Park, because you would never even have the opportunity to have that conversation if we'd written the check. So I, I would urge you to please step, consider stepping back from your comments for a moment and look just at this project and the underlying truth of it. And if there is a larger issue, which is how are we managing growth in this county? And how are we interacting with the state of California and Caltrans around how highways are measured and evaluated and what we're doing about them? That's a larger planning issue. I don't know, frankly, how that unfolds in your world and whether you have the ability to do that. I think that's the, the more productive way than taking on one little mine guy and saying, I'm going to whack you eighty trips, eighty days a year because I'm annoyed or distressed or upset about the larger state highway issue or the highway evaluations or however those folks in Sacramento do that. Can I, can you, can you help me, Brian, as, as your final departing thing, to get back to your best draw, the, the traffic study summary that you had? How do I do that?
I can only help you in certain limited areas.
So, how do I get back to that?
Which one did you want?
The one that had the chart of all the mines and the truck trips. There you go. Okay, so let, let's have a conversation for a moment, okay? You have on this board, as I understand it, every single mine now that ever has existed or is, has gone through you or may go through you. There are no other mining operations in this area, to my knowledge, that exist. So you have already addressed Grimes Rock, and so that's fixed, that isn't moving anywhere. You have already addressed Wayne J., that's fixed, it isn't moving anywhere. Both of those have come through you, and you've ruled and voted on CUPs, and you have fixed all of the numbers we are looking at here. You have before you RSC Rancho San Cristobal, that's what today is about. So that only leaves two others. One is Cmax. You know my feelings about Cmax. I have no idea whether you'll ever see it or not, because of all of the things that you've and I have talked about, your commission and I have talked about, I provided you the paperwork we got around Cmax, so I don't know whether you will ever see it. That is the eight-hundred-pound gorilla around truck trips, of course. If you look at the numbers, Cmax is the eight-hundred-pound gorilla around this. It goes back to a CUP from a long while ago, and I don't know how they ever got those trips. I will tell you, to my knowledge, they have not used a large number of those trips over the years, but I don't know that for a fact, that's just anecdotal. But that's what is sitting, as I understand it, with the planning director after the planning director hearing. And again, I don't know what that looks like, but that's what is the eight-hundred-pound gorilla. And you have Best Rock. But Best Rock, you'll recall, I think it was this body in 2012 that revoked the CUP, and Best Rock is never coming back. It's a, and certainly, Mr. Baca can speak to this, but it's a fully mined-out area, they actually infringed on the Grimes Rock area. You revoked their CUP, the county's pulled their bond, there's a reclamation process that's now unfolding. And one of the things that was before you in the Grimes Rock modification in the first week of August was a capture, if I can use that word, of roughly twenty acres of the Best Rock site into Grimes to facilitate the reclamation for the benefit of everybody, my client at that point in time, Grimes, as well as the county, in terms of saving money and getting that whole thing reclaimed. So Best Rock's never coming back. Not possible. So the truth, as much as you may feel otherwise, Chairman Anstott, the truth is the truck trips today, maximum truck trips from every single mine, is what you see. It is roughly ten percent less than it existed in 2014 and before. It's decreased, it's not increased. Now, I can't talk to other trucks for other purposes that use that road or other things that are happening, but from a mine operation perspective, and you know I represent Grimes and I represent Rancho San Cristobal, I don't represent the others, but from a mine perspective, the truck trips as regulated by your commission and the county are a ten percent decrease. They haven't increased. So, and that, this, what you see includes the application that's before you, the additional ability to work Monday to Friday as opposed to something less than Monday to Friday through the year. Because that's really all that Rancho San Cristobal's asking for, is the ability to work a normal workday. The original CUP was, you don't get to work a normal Monday to Friday workday in terms of, of operations. And they're just a business like everybody else's business, and all they're asking is the ability to work a normal workday, which is Monday to Friday. So I would urge you to reconsider your initial thoughts, because as much as you may feel the frustration, and we all experience truck trips, and I get that, really honest, I get that, the, the bottom-line truth in terms of what's before you here today is what you see on the board. And, because there's no other mine, and Mr. Baca can speak to it and tell me I'm wrong, but I'm not aware of any other mine location existing or contemplated or in the process of being permitted or anything else. So this is it. It's a ten percent reduction from 2014 and before. And as to the, the location, remember, Rancho San Cristobal is below Grimes, so it's closer to Fillmore. So you're not, that, I mean, from, just from a practical world perspective, I think that the, the odds of Rancho San Cristobal vehicle trucks for arriving or leaving, going up or down that grade, is fairly de minimis. This mine is a clay mine, it's not rock and, rock and sand, it's a clay mine. The material is of two components, it's the clay and it's what's called overburden, which is dirt. And the clay is, can't be used for much of anything other than what we all want it to be used for, which is for our landfills and other related type operations. So it serves the public good in that regard in terms of facilitating those operations. That's a good thing. It, it has dirt that comes with it, and it's, that's just regular old dirt, and the most recent use of it was for the city of Fillmore, for, for the bridges project. The bulk of the material that was used to fill in under that development, that the city of Fillmore wanted, its community wanted, the citizenry chose to do, and is building out there, came from Rancho San Cristobal. So that's actually the kind of thing we want in our county, right? A location supplying material to a very near location that's requested. I mean, that's the perfect dynamic of, of what we would, we all would like to see, as opposed to trucks rolling all over. And of course, none of those trucks were on the 126 in a way that you're describing. They went from back and forth between dislocation and bridges. So, and that's the kind of use of this kind of material. It's, it tends to be that kind of fill material for those kind of developments which are nearby and are developments that are approved and managed and authorized by local citizenry, whether it's the city of Fillmore, the city of Santa Paula, or Pyru, or wherever it may be. And they need fill material, so that's a good thing. I, at least in my view, we can have a philosophical conversation about should bridges have been built or not. Not, not in my pay grade, that was the decision of the, of the city and its folks, but really, that's the kind of thing that the material's used for, it's kept local, and because it's of such low values in terms of materials, it doesn't, you, you can't, there's no mileage in terms of economics of trucking it far away, it doesn't work. So it's kept local, it's used local for the benefit of local, regulated by local. So again, I, I think this is, I mean, we can have a, a political conversation about what planning department should do or shouldn't do, but the truth is that this is consistent with, I think, what you're asking for, which is how do we shrink truck traffic while maintaining a vibrant economy and supporting local businesses and the use of materials locally and all of those other things that I think we all would agree are conceptually good. How we may get there are different conversations, but that's all a good thing. And here's what's happened. It's been a ten percent shrink. So I would urge you respectfully to step back from the anecdotal frustration that you've expressed. And not punish this applicant that is simply asking to run its business like you and I and everybody else runs it, Monday, Monday to Friday. So the, the other comments I would make is to comment on your reclamation plan. I think Mr. Baca slightly misspoke. The reclamation plan does not contemplate trees or, or orchards at its conclusion. If you, the reclamation plan, as I understand it from, from Ms. Farkas, who's here and was involved in writing it, contemplates either grazing or open space. And there's a reason. This, this is a landslide, this is, mine is essentially the curative to that landslide and continues to be the cure to that whole unstable area. And we believe that one of the reasons there was the historic landslide was because of irrigation. Now, I'm not going to suggest it was causation, but that is conceptually why the reclamation plan doesn't contemplate orchard, it contemplates grazing or livestock. The answer directly to your question of why cattle and horses or equine, I'm told that the replant or revegetation was with native materials that were more in line with that. And so that was the biological, environmental conversation that happened around that. I, I will also tell you that from our point of view, there is absolutely no objection to the reclamation plan modifying to being, instead of cattle and equine, to be any livestock. That, that's not anything that, that is of significance to us. I would only ask, because I don't know the answer to this, Mr. Baca to comment on whether or not that requires us going through a bunch of hoops through the state of California. Because if we have to go through a bunch of hoops with the state of California to do that, we'd rather not. But if, if Ms. Pirlpart and Mr. Baca tell you don't need to, that can be easily accomplished, and then we're all good with that. and then we're all good with that. There's, there's nothing magic about that one from our point of view at all. So happy to open it up to all of those alternatives. I, I also want to comment a little bit, if I can, about Monty and his wife. I, I sent to you yesterday evening, I don't know if it got to you, an email from me to Mr. Baca, copy to your commission that had the emails from the Winklers. Did that?
We have his retraction.
Well, yeah, but, but it also had my email to Mr. Baca, which was important, I thought. And I don't know if it actually hit your guys' hands. I have copies of it, which I'm happy to provide.
I think if you want it in the record, you better submit it to the clerk.
Five, five submissioners? How many do I need to? Five? Okay. And, and, um...
Madam Clerk, how are you marking that?
Right. One, two, three, four, five.
Okay.
And what I, what I want to share, in the context, I, I think in part of the city of Fillmore's position and your comments, Chair Anstott, there, um, are, the, the, the main guy in Rancho San Cristobal is Chuck Teague. We, we all know who his grandfather was. I mean, his family's been here for generations. He has, he has zero interest, zero, like, less than zero interest in not being all good with everybody. I mean, this is a generational conversation for him. And so we, we have been in conversation with the city of Fillmore to make sure that any and all...
I didn't, I didn't understand what you just said. Could you repeat that, please?
We, we, where, where did you lose me? I'm sorry, apologize.
Generational.
Yeah. Mr. Teague's grandfather was involved in Congress and...
Charles.
Stayed here, and his family's been in the county for a number of generations. So it's important, this is not an outside operator or somebody even one generation. This is, Mr. Teague's family's been here for some number of generations, and I, and, and Mr. Anstott knows that. And so it is, it has been extraordinarily important to the family to be open and transparent in dialogue with anybody and everybody in this regard. And so the, he's been in direct contact with the city of Fillmore. I have been in conversation with the city of Fillmore throughout this process to make sure that not only are they comfortable, but they understand exactly the operations, they know what's going on, exactly what's being contemplated. It's been completely 100% transparent. This is not, the, the postcard goes from your staff to the city and then they either pay attention or they don't pay attention. There have been direct conversations through this entire process. And the only thing the city of Fillmore asked for was their fair share language, which they've asked for from the two clients I've been involved in, both Grimes and Rancho San Cristobal, and both said, of course. And so that's in there, and they've approved that. And I, I will tell you that the conversations have included from me, are you hearing from any citizens? Are there any comments that you're hearing? Are, are there community people talking to you that we should be meeting with or talking to or any? And the answer is no. Now, I don't know the truth of that. I only know what we're being told. And the only communication that we've been made aware of is from, from Monty Winkler and his wife. And my client's response was to get ahold of the Winklers, say, can I come sit and talk to you? And Mr. Teague went over to their house and had a conversation for an hour or two to talk about the mine, what it does, what their concerns are, and everything else. And the response was their email, where they said, we're fine with you, we don't have issues, and they wrote their email, which you've referred to as a retraction. But frankly, that, that's my client's attitude and what's been available on the table, not just of the city of Fillmore, but everybody else other than the city of Moore Park. Because the city of Moore Park conversation was the one I've described in my letter, which you have, and I want, I purposely put it in the letter because I want it to be public, what exactly happened with my client. And they walked out and said, you know, not, not go in there. And, you know, of course, if they'd done that and they'd written the check for the 48 grand, then you and I wouldn't be having this conversation here today. So I, I would urge the approval of this application. It's, uh, it's, uh, it continues to be curative of a continuing slide area. It is, the work that's been done has, we believe, fully protected the highway at this point, but it, as Mr. Baca told you, from a geological point of view, it's still in move. So it's a good thing for this to be done. It's good material that's used locally or for a public purpose. And the only difference, and, and I want to emphasize that the additional days to allow Monday through Friday are no new peak trips. You can pose this question to Mr. Baca, but the additional days that aggravated you, that aggravate you, are no new peak trips, no new peak hour trips. I mean, it's as benign a modification really as can be put on the table. And as Commissioner Rodriguez questioned and observed, the Saturday is simply onsite stuff. It's the ability of them to have people come in and do the kind of basic work that you do in a, in a mine. So the trips are, you know, a handful of employee-type people in their personal vehicles. No export or import or movement of any kind of trucks at all on Saturday. So I, I think that's the truth objectively. So setting aside the larger frustration, I'd ask you not to, to visit that frustration that you have around the larger issue of how populations are in our county, not, not on this claim. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and I apologize for traveling too long on this, my comments.
Go ahead, John.
Do you want it to change to livestock or no?
Yeah. If, if, I, I would rely on staff because I honestly don't know the answer, but if Ms. Prilhart or Mr. Baca can tell us we don't have to go back through Sacramento or it's just a notification, we're perfectly fine with that change to livestock. We would be perfectly fine with the commission saying, subject to that determination by staff that you don't have to cycle back to Sacramento, change it to livestock. And then, then they can figure that out.
Okay. I didn't know if it would be a benefit or not.
It's, it's, yeah. I mean, that was the why, is what I'm told by Ms. Farkas.
Right.
And so we're, we're, whatever is comfortable for you is fine with us.
Just trying to make things work.
Yes.
Um, did I understand you to say that you were prepared to present the city of Moore Park a check for $48,000?
I, I was, I was of the mind to ask the city of Moore Park to come on up here just for purposes of this conversation and say, if I put this check here on this table, are you folks gonna now stand up here and formally withdraw the appeal?
So there, so there is no check?
No, we are not going to pay them the money.
Okay.
That was the decision made by our client.
Okay. You said low-valued, the overburdened dirt, but clay is high value.
Correct.
And it is intermittent. It's not an ongoing, everyday thing because it's largely used for landfill liners.
The clay side of it, correct.
Yeah. So it's feast or famine? It just depends on what the, the demand is in the area?
Yes, on clay. That's how I understand it. Yeah. And Mr. Teague's here and certainly can answer that.
But clay is quite valuable. Are there other clay mines in the region that you're familiar with? Yeah.
I, I, I'm...
This is...
Chuck, Chuck, come, come up here. That's, that, you're asking what I would call an operational question, and I honestly don't answer. I want to make sure you have accurate information. This is Chuck Teague. So if you could answer the question about clay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chuck, give your address, please.
Pardon me?
Give your address, please.
Uh, my name is Chuck Teague. I live at 1708 Cherry Hill Road in Santa Paula, California, 93060.
Thank you.
This, uh, this commodity, this, this clay is used primarily for landfill liners.
Correct.
In the construction of, of landfills.
And cap, liner and cap.
And cap.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, uh, use, supply this material to Chiquita Canyon?
Um, Chiquita Canyon, Sunshine Canyon landfill, which is where the 14 and the 5 come together. We also supply, uh, we supplied Calabasas landfill, which is on the 101 in Calabasas. Tolan landfill in Santa Paula have, has contemplated using us at time to time, but right before they, uh, uh, would use us, they've discovered little clay pockets for themselves and onsite. So they, they've been, been able to use their onsite clays. Uh, we've also supplied in other areas in Los Angeles through the years.
Okay. I wasn't aware, I wasn't aware that you supplied to Sunshine Canyon. I don't think I have a, I don't think I have a, a conflict, but my, my husband is an independent monitor for the Sunshine Canyon landfill disclosure. Um, but clay is a valuable commodity.
Well, it can be. It's either a commodity that you despise or it's a commodity that you love. And so unfortunately, it's not loved often enough as far as I'm concerned, but...
Exactly. It's what I was talking about with feast or famine.
Right, right. Exactly. Feast or famine.
Feast or famine. Um, are you aware of other, um, uh, clay sources similar to, to what you offer in the region?
There are none in the region.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's all?
Richard?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Teague. Thanks for coming up. And it has, it has to do with the truck traffic and hours of operation. I realize we cannot restrict traffic on 23 because it's a state highway. However, I think we have the ability to put some limitations on the operation when the trucks flow in and out of any site. And my concern is truck, truck traffic flowing either through Fillmore or Moore Park at 6 o'clock in the morning or prior to that because your operations start at 6:00. And I've got a problem there. Having, as, as you probably heard, having myself dealt with those, those issues, you know, 20-plus years ago when I was there. I'm curious if we can accommodate something as part of the CUP to basically put something into the flow exiting, exiting the, uh, the mine at a certain time as opposed to, other than 6:00. Because as I see it, I visualize that trucks are going to be, coming out of there at 6:00. And concurrent with that, then the trucks would have to get in there before that. And that's a lot of traffic, certainly through Moore Park, which, which is a downtown and kind of quasi-residential area since 23 goes past, up along the canyon road.
What are the commission's thoughts on that? Would you consider something like that? Would that be possible? Work, would that work for your operation if...
Well, let me, let me kind of explain the actual operations to date. I can't predict the actual operations in the future, which is one of the reasons we're, we're, we're here. But to date, 99% of our market goes to Los Angeles via eastbound on the 126, okay? And that's also where our trucks come from, is from northern LA County westbound on the 126. They don't get to the mine until 6:00. They're not waiting to be loaded at 6:00. They get, they are allowed to come to the mine at 6:00 AM. And they enter the mine, um, from 23, Highway 23, and we have a, we have a left-hand turnout pocket, per Caltrans design, for those trucks to use at that time in the morning to enter the mine. They come up on the mine, all the trucks are off the highway, and they wait to get loaded, and they start leaving the mine in just a few minutes after 6:00 AM. And there's a, you know, there's, you know, four or five minutes apiece. Now, when they leave the mine, they're facing downhill, and we have a, we have a merger lane that, that faces north as they, as they head back towards the city of Fillmore. And so they have a, have a kind of a running start. And so I'm proud to say we've never had any accidents involving our trucks because of our location. And I guess luck, some good drivers, et cetera. Now, um, the, the hours of operation you speak to have been carefully considered in the past, and were thought to be okay then, and we're hoping they'll be okay now. I'm not saying great, I'm just saying okay. Admittedly, um, in those commuter hours, starting at about, you know, 7:00, 7:00-ish in the morning all through 8:00, it, you have to pay attention. As Chairman Anstott mentioned, that it's not an ideal situation, and we understand that as mine operators, and so do the truck drivers. And the impatient commuters trying to pass trucks on double yellows and these kinds of things happen everywhere in the county, not just on Grimes Road. Doesn't make it right, but it doesn't make it wrong either, in my opinion. We take care, we have flagmen in place for merging on the highway. We're very cognizant of early morning hours if it happens to be, you know, during the wintertime or whatever, and, and we, we keep the highway clean, we sweep it. We do what we can to maintain a safe environment for the trucks as we understand the dangers that exist on that highway. I don't know if I answered your question or not.
Yeah, I think you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why 30 years, Peter?
I'm sorry?
Why 30 years?
Because that's what a mine needs as a practical matter in terms of its economic life and, excuse me, that's what it needs in its economic life. That's what all the mines are. Grimes, I believe, was 30 years. Wayne J., I think, was 30 years. C-Mex, I believe, was originally 40 years, but in the process of, the planning director process, I think, has now been reduced to 30 years. That's the pretty standard timeframe for mine operations. So it's a, it's, uh, you know, in the context of a mine, it's not just the capital improvements of everything to make it work, but there's a very significant recapture or rehabilitation cost at the conclusion of the process. It's all gotta be reestablished to open space or grazing, and that's a very expensive, time-consuming process. So that's the economic kind of reality. And I believe that's consistent with virtually every other permit for a mine in this county. Mr. Baca can speak to it, but certainly the ones up in this area here.
Why the increase in tonnage? Because if I recall, somewhere in the neighborhood of, over a period of time, you varied between, what, 6,000 and, what was it?
975.
Yeah, hang on, just, just a second.
Well, that's the...
Your, your, your annual production was varied between 6,500 tons and 651,000 tons, and yet you're asking to increase it to 975.
Yeah.
Why the increase?
I'm happy to answer that. The arithmetic increase is a function of the 80 additional days. The way, the way, as I understand it, Mr. Baca calculates it, and he'll correct me if I'm wrong, is the maximum tonnage is based upon an assumption that 100% of the truck trips will be used. And it's a, just an arithmetic calculation to that maximum. If the maximum were to increase more than the maximum tonnage would increase. If the ma, if the number of truck trips were to decrease, then that tonnage would decrease. So it's a, it's a simple arithmetic calculation. The answer to the variation, which Commissioner Idukas spoke to around feast or famine, is there is truth to that. Idukas spoke to around feast or famine, is there is truth to that. And the, uh, big number that you see, uh, which pushed to the limit and has in part caused this request for the, be able to do Monday through Friday, was the Bridges Project. The, the project, uh, in, in its timeline and structure by the city of Fillmore required a lot of this overburden in a fairly rapid manner, and it pushed the mine right up to the ceiling in terms of the maximum number of truck trips. So the CUP sets the maximum, but the truth is that it's feast or famine. And if you look at those historic numbers, you'll see that it is very much the exception that the maximum ever is reached, uh, because it is this feast or famine event, and the mine experienced this limitation in a hard way around the Bridge Project, uh, through the city of Fillmore in terms of being able to meet that need. So that's why the additional Monday through Friday trips are being asked for. But I will tell you candidly, and I suspect my client would acknowledge this, looking at the actual history, the max is gonna be a rare event. But in CUP land, if it's not available, it never can be used. That's the problem. It, it, it can't get there otherwise. So that's the why, the operational business why.
Thank you. Is anyone else gonna speak on behalf of the applicant?
Thank you for your time.
We don't have anyone from the city of Moore Park. Staff, closing comments?
I don't have any comments unless you have questions for us, but I would like to address Commissioner Idukas' concerns that, and Mr. Goldenring's concerns as well, that to change, um, the reclamation plan to any sort of livestock is not gonna require any other additional review from the Department of Conservation.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'll close the public hearing, move the exhibits to the record, and entertain discussion.
I didn't get a chance to look at that Goldenring email that he said was important.
Oh, could we see that, please? Well, I'll reopen the public hearing. Be your pardon?
Is it?
Oh, there are four copies there.
Is it long? Okay, this is the one from the Winklers. This is the one from the Winklers.
That's, that's my email to Mr. Baca and you both, transmitting the Winkler emails, 'cause I believe they sent it to Brian's wrong email. I wanted to make sure he got it.
Okay, I read it.
It wouldn't have anything to do with the fact that, uh, Mr. Teague's grandfather employed Monty Winkler for most of his adult life in Washington, would it?
Uh, you know, uh, I, I, you know...
Do we even need to be here? I mean, can we just leave it to you guys?
Sure.
'Cause I could, you know?
No response necessary.
I mean, I'm hap, I'm happy, I'm happy to, I, was that an invitation?
It was a joke.
See, I understand.
It was a joke.
Okay. We're back on discussion. Closing the public hearing.
I, I'm aware of, of, uh, the landfill business a little bit because of the nature of, um, my business. And, uh, clay is utilized for, uh, cell lining of landfills. And, uh, cells are being built all the time, but, um, but only, it's not the whole, there is a whole landfill, and then there's little cells of the landfill. So that construction period, um, is intermittent, and that's why, um, I was, uh, and I was only aware of Chiquita Canyon, which is a, a big, big landfill. So, um, this material is, um, is pretty unique, and it is, um, very valuable because what it allows to have happened for landfills, I just happen to know, is, uh, you have, um, construction of these cells, the land, the garbage decomposes, and, uh, the leachate, the liquids that are, um, created by that decomposition are, are confined. And, um, also, there is methane gas that is produced, and, uh, that can be recovered and be utilized for, um, energy. And it's a source of renewable energy. And that's something also that, uh, my husband was involved with for, for many years, uh, back in the eighties. So, uh, this, this material, this clay material is a valuable resource. And, um, and where you find it, it's, uh, it's, it's not the same as aggregate, um, where can, where, it's pretty common. Um, and the, the cost is, has to do with transportation. This is, um, I'm sure Commissioner Onstott is familiar, you know, that, uh, it's not something that you'd, uh, wanna plant trees in. But you do wanna, um, have this available. So I'm in support of the project. I understand that, um, these, these towns are, um, burdened by, um, just the geologic roll of the dice, that this happens to be where these, um, resources are. So, um, I would, I feel comfortable moving approval. And, um, the, the livestock was something that just, I just thought, hmm, how strange, cattle and horses. And I started thinking, why not all these other things? And if it's something that's, um, helpful, um, I would propose, um, you know, making that change.
Go ahead.
Just for clarification and comments sake, first of all, I appreciate the applicant giving us some clarity and helping make this decision, um, one that seems to be rational. Uh, I don't see anything in testimony that gives me a reason to deny, um, the applicant the time and the additional truck trips. So I'm gonna be in support of it.
I, I also, uh, appreciate the applicant's presentation and response to the questions I had as relates to truck traffic and the hours of operation. Um, I'm satisfied with the explanation you've given, and, and it appears to me that you're taking, making every effort to, to minimize the impact of those vehicles on 23. Um, also the fact that the ninety percent plus of your traffic is going northbound really doesn't impact the city of Moore Park in that regard. Um, and obviously, you've, you've met and dealt with the city of Fillmore to their satisfaction, and you're a provider within the city limits for further development, obviously. Um, so that, that sets my, uh, my concerns of hours of operation aside, and I'm prepared to follow staff recommendation on this CUP application, uh, renewal.
Well, I too support the project. I do. But I can't support the increase in truck traffic that'll put another truck on the road, eighty days or whatever you wanna call it. I will not support, I would support staff recommendation absent the increase in days. I don't wanna put any more truck traffic on the road. I'm sorry that this local business finds itself in the position it's in. It is unsafe. I don't care what any traffic study says. If you drive it on a regular basis, you know that. The road should be improved significantly, but it has not been for whatever reason. I remember at one point in time, there was some plan to put a new connector between, uh, was it Moore Park or Simi and 126? That, of course, fell through. That would've solved all these problems. But I drive it on a regular basis. My friends and family drive it on a regular basis. Based on the information that I have, I don't know that it's essential or even necessary that they have the increase in tonnage and need the eighty days. I mean, they varied from six, sixty-five hundred tons to another number, nowhere near close to the number they're asking for. So my position is I'd support the staff recommendation, but I will not increase truck traffic. So why don't we vote? Make a motion, somebody.
Just clarification. The application in front of us doesn't, doesn't ask for additional, uh, increase in the cap on the authorized truck traffic right now. It's just basically allowing them, in essence, to move the operation from...
Three hundred trips a day.
From, from...
Because we're getting more days, one eighty to, what, two sixty or something?
Well, but we're still within the Monday through Friday...
Yep.
Hours of their operation.
And I have no problem with them operating on Saturday, since the trucks aren't on the road.
Right, and the operation on Saturday is strictly gonna be within the, uh, CUP and the, and the mine, without impacting truck traffic or any vehicle traffic on the road. So, okay. I'm ready, I'm prepared to vote.
No, we haven't. We need a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we, uh, follow staff recommendation, and, uh, it's in front of us today.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. Chuck, appreciate it. I took no pleasure in voting that. It's the traffic issue, and it's cumulative. Okay.
It doesn't matter. So, hello, Chair Onstott, members of the board. I just got back from a nice, um, long three-week vacation, so I'm feeling, um, rather energized, happy to be back. Um, so just briefly, I believe that you've all met Jennifer Scholl. So Jennifer is, um, going to be, or is already, the new manager for our commercial and industrial permit section while we're phasing out all of the good work that Mr. Baca has done for the county for the last six years. Um, so you'll be seeing, um, Jennifer quite often down here. Um, and so I just wanted to, she's, she, uh, has come to us from Santa Barbara, so she's worked in the planning department for the county of, um, Santa Barbara many years ago, and she's done a lot of, um, consulting work over the last twenty-five years. She's very knowledgeable on, on all topics, including sequo and mining and oil and gas, so she's going to be a great addition to our team. You, you will be seeing her quite a bit, so you'll become very familiar with her. If you have any questions on any of the staff reports that she, she's, uh, or her staff is preparing, you can feel free to call Jennifer directly. Um, so let me just go over really quickly your, um, the, the next two items on your agenda. So we will be seeing you again on October nineteenth. There is an oil and gas appeal, um, for a project known as the Bentley Family Limited Partnership. This is the continued operation and maintenance of nine existing oil and gas wells and associated equipment, um, near the community of Ojai. That's the only item on that agenda. We will be adding, um, on that agenda, a request that Commissioner Onstott requested, um, and there'll be a discussion by county council on that with, for a reasonable time parameters regarding the submittal of documents for the planning commission hearings. Mr. Barnes is ready to talk about that. We'll agendize that, and we'll have that discussion on October nineteenth as well. Um, and then on October twenty-sixth, um, both of those hearings, I believe Commissioner Rodriguez is not going to be present for those, but on October twenty-sixth, there's been a recent item added to your agenda regarding a zoning ordinance amendment regarding adult-use cannabis. That is at the direction of the board. Um, and, uh, the board has directed us to get something in place by the end of the year, so the agency director, Chris Stevens, will be bringing that, um, the board's direction, to you for an ordinance amendment. Um, and that will happen at 8:30 AM on October the twenty-sixth. And that is the...
Could I ask that we have, I don't know when the staff report will be out, but I have a feeling that'll be an interesting situation. I just wanna make sure we get plenty of time to review it.
Right. I received the staff report yesterday, so I'm gonna take a quick look at it. I believe it's his intention to get it out to you as soon as possible.
Thank you.
So, uh, county council is reviewing it concurrently with me. So, you know, we, we know that you would like some time, and so we're going to, um, hurry up. Um, that is the only two items that I see, um, on your agenda. I know that, uh, on the board's agenda, we have the, on November seventh, it's the county-initiated amendments, um, which were the, um, general plan, zoning ordinance consistency. You heard that a few weeks ago. You recommended unanimous approval on that. That's moving forward to the board on November seventh, so that's...
Did we hear it?
Yeah, you, well, you, you heard it quickly. But yes, you did hear it. Um, so that's the only item we have on the board's agenda right now, and so that's all I have for you, unless you have something for me.
Go ahead, Maggie.
So it seems that, um, in the year that I've been here, we, we seem to rustle quite a bit with this truck trip impact issue. And it, it, it's unfair, I think, for us, unfortunately, and unfortunate for a specific applicant when they come here. We just approved something in August, yet we're debating on not approving somebody today, because there seems to be this unanswered question about, is it cumulative impacts of, um, truck trips on highways and roads that create unsafe environments? I know for me, living in Simi Valley, the 118 freeway is becoming very congested, um, by trucks, and it's aggravating and frustrating to me. Thankfully, it doesn't create an unsafe environment, but it does create an environment where, um, you're aggravated and frustrated because you're surrounded by trucks all the time. Is there an educational aspect of this that can be presented to the planning commission to help us better understand, so that we're not denying one applicant, but approving another applicant because we are so concerned about this unknown? I, I'm just wondering if there's some way we could, we could be educated better on that.
It's called a traffic study.
So, um, Commissioner Kestley, I can, um, explore some training opportunities with the transportation director, Mr. Fleisch, and, and see if he has ideas. So, so we can, um, talk about how traffic studies are done, and how traffic safety analysis is done, and, and what it is that we roll up, and, and what, um, uh, analysis that we get from the CHP as far as accident records, and, and talk about all that. But at the end, there's state highways, right, which even our transportation director doesn't control. So it's possible that we could get someone here from Caltrans to maybe talk about that angle as well. Um, I, I will explore that and see, see what it is that we can bring back.
Thank you, Kim, very much.
Anything further?
Uh, yeah. Obviously, I won't be here on the twenty-sixth. Um, I'll be on vacation. I'll try to listen to Chris's presentation. I don't, I don't know whether he's gonna submit anything, uh, as part of that oral presentation, but if he would, obviously, I'll pick it up. Um, short-term rentals are still out there, um, waiting to have some resolution or direct, more direction from the board, I assume, uh, or to us, to the board.
Right. The board's already given direction on that. Um, Mr. Stevens is also preparing that ordinance. Um, and that should be here relatively shortly. I mean, I would expect it will come to you perhaps before the end of the year, um, but I'll check in with him and, and get a date.
Okay. I certainly would wanna, I certainly would wanna be present on that. I, you know, I'm directly impacted, uh, by multiple residences that are short-term Airbnb, VRBO, uh, within the one-block area specific to my residence. Uh, and so I would like to have some presence.
We'll make sure that, we'll make sure that all five planning commissioners are available for that, because it's not on the same timeline that, um, that the, uh, adult-use marijuana is on.
Right.
Because we have a timeline clicking on January first, and so the county needs to, to take action on that, because, of course, it would be our preference to have all five of you for that discussion as well.
Okay. And lastly, uh, now that I'm past my back surgery, and pretty much back to the new normal, I'm having surgery on, uh, on November twenty-first. I'm having a knee-joint replacement, so, um, obviously, I've already put down, I'm not available for the thirtieth. I don't expect to be up and around. Uh, the following week is obviously questionable, 'cause I don't know what's gonna happen as far as my ex- as far as my activity. The rest of the month, you know, I expect to be functional to the degree that I can get around, so, just FYI.
Thank you, and good luck with your surgery.
Thanks.
That being it, we'll adjourn. I always love to do this.